Okay, we do have a forum here with both members, so we will, and Director Loma just walked in too. So we will start our work session at 6:30. In attendance today are Director Loma, Director Daniels, Director Nelson, Director Hart, Director Melpat, and Director Fankas is here too. And six of us joining in person, and Director Jefferson is joining us. One work session agenda, it follows from the board meeting last week. And it is the application charter school, the charter school application that is in front of us to consider Orton Academy. This came as an non-action item last week. The board had several questions, the DAC provided input too. And we have Orton back here today to have an in-depth discussion and provide feedback on some of the questions that are already asked. Earlier this morning, Dr. Mendelsburg sent me an email that I forwarded to the board, which was the answers to some of the DAC questions, or all of the DAC questions that were asked at the time. With that, it looks like you are going to talk about dyslexia, I suppose, first?
I am going to, there she is, I'm gonna ask Tamara to give a brief. There was a request following the non-action item at the last board meeting for us to do an overview for the board and the community of the current dyslexia program offerings in traditional D11 schools. Tamara?
Alright, so our work today, we'll just do a very quick, high-level overview in D11. So you can see here, we'll talk about current support for all students, our Take Flight training cohort work, clinical and targeted sites that we currently have, future next steps for expansion, and just a very little bit, which we may not have exactly right. And then so you all can correct me if, but some of the difference between what we offer here in D11 and what would be different that would be provided through this partnership, this work. So with that, support for all students, every student in D11, if identified or exhibiting characteristics of dyslexia, should receive some support and does have access to support within their building. They don't have to move schools in order to do that. It's just a matter of the level of support that's we're providing in each building. And that, that amount of all is with the type of intervention that we're ensuring at every school. So with intervention programs in phonics and phonemic awareness and foundational skills. So you can see some of the, some of the programming that we have there with 95% group, Higerty, phonemic awareness, Orton Gillingham, et cetera. What we're continuing to do work across the system is provide training to all of our educators. That includes our classroom teachers, but also includes special educators and interventionists. So that we, we have continued to work to do across the system. And we also have a cohort of more intensive training with our Take Flight trainees. So currently we have 34-plus staff that are already certified or they're participating in training to become certified to address dyslexia through the use of, again, Take Flight intervention program. And so you can see the breakdown of where we're at in the training of those individuals. And currently, number of students that we know that we have supported in the past year. Next, our focus site, so we talked about having sites where you can get a more intensive level of support in trained personnel. We have what we call clinic sites and we have target sites. A clinic site has a full-time therapist on staff. And our targeted sites have access to an identified position that is receiving training, additional support. They are not, they don't have the hours in to be a therapist. And then at various elementary schools, we have more limited supports, but needs-based, where we can push in people that have that training to do one or two groups potentially per site based on need. Okay, and this goes to why we know that we've worked hard to put a plan in place and offer much more. We know there's, we have more that we can absolutely do. In connection to our academic master plan, we want to expand. And so you can see, we want to have more, we want to add to our Take Flight training cohorts. We want to add additional clinic sites and targeted sites. We want to add more opportunities for programming in Orton Gillingham groups to schools, both in-school and after-school programming, and provide that training and support to match that. We've talked about this before. I know Director Nelson, you've also talked about the need to make sure that we are doing this, but others have as well. We want to be able to expand more to secondary and have a more intensive focus in middle school. And then be able to offer more after-school evening settings.
So just to be clear, on the secondary level support, we're not supporting students at the secondary level under these programs yet?
We are, we are, we do have levels of support, but we need a, we need a much more targeted. So like the way we've looked at elementary or clinic sites, target sites, we don't have that identified across our areas across the system. And we also need to think of that in terms of, when that is established, the, who we have trained in each of those areas. The, and so... Cindy, go through that. Alright, so what we're saying here is where we can, we can talk a little bit, but what we think, what I believe are similar between Orton and our D11 pilot sites. And I did have the opportunity with Superintendent Ball and somebody from our curriculum instruction team to visit last year. And so that was, that was very helpful and very nice to have those conversations. But both, we both provide research-based supports for students with indicators of dyslexia. And some of the things that we're calling out as potential differences between Orton and what we currently offer in D11, that the majority of our services right now are pull-out and after-school supports, and so it's in that tier-two, tier-three range. And this says, Orton provides a school within a school model, but ideally, and from the conversation yesterday and also from my conversations, it's that idea of throughout the day supports, no matter what educator touches the students. And so, you know, that is ideally where, what I was talking about with the future training and the training of all of our staff. We would have a vision that every school, really, outside, it doesn't even, it's not D11, it's any school should be able to do that. But obviously, there needs to be continued training and foundational literacy, very specifically the screeners that we use for dyslexia, how to target instruction, and what that looks like throughout the course of the day. But that last bullet here, D11 provides support to students with or without formal diagnosis. I think from listening to the information that was provided the last time that you all came, I think you have some of that too. I think like the documentation is different, like probably that we use within that and what you all select there. That's it?
Yeah, and so just the bridge here is, is I asked Tamara to describe our dyslexia programs and then think about this from an academic master plan. We could not be prouder of the incredible work that the team has put in and just, or at least codified in this last year in the target and the clinic sites. And we've had specific superintendent's reports and feedback from families of very strong demand and satisfaction with that. However, what Orton offers is slightly different than what we offer. We believe that there's a potential complement in the way that these programs can be working together. I heard a specific question about middle school, you're already in the middle school space. We will develop either clinic or target sites for our middle schools, for our families, at that tier-one or tier-two level of support. But Orton has been doing this for a while, and the level of questioning that the board will ask now. But we feel that there is a potential partnership and a match from serving the overall needs of the community in a way that we, I don't think have done in a programmatic way for some time. I appreciate the overview and again, the really hard work that's gone in in a very short period of time, the solving at the level that we've solved. And now, to those who have asked to solve it, is that a different level? Scott, do you want to introduce the team again? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, I cut over.
So can you put it in the context of time? Remind me, with the targeted site, the students are being pulled out of class or, or is it 45 minutes? Twice a week versus the clinic site is, you know, four times a week? Can you just quantify it a little bit of the least that, not, I don't mean that in a bad way, but the minimal amount that we're providing in the targeted versus the most that we're providing in the amount of time that students versus like in all day, every day? I will try to answer your question, I think I'm understanding it. It's more about, Director Nelson, it's more about identification of students that would benefit from that level of targeted support. And then the frequency, it needs to be frequent interaction with those tier-two and tier-three interventions from the trained professional. In a clinic site, that is, that is a therapist, an identified therapist. In the targeted site, it's somebody who's received an increased level of training, but are, in, I showed the slide that had like where we're at in terms of numbers with where they're at in the programming. So it just, it's just where they're at in the programming. They may, they may have had all of their professional hours, but are still working on clinical hours. But they have a certain level of expertise. So every building, whether it's clinical or targeted, has that extra staffing with that support. And they are seeing students and targeted groups on a daily basis based on identification. So for, for pull-out from, during, what you could think of it like, how we talk about interventions?
Okay, so it's, it's not necessarily that every student that qualifies is going to get two days a week for 45 minutes. It could really vary on what the actual student is needing. There are going to be some students that maybe are going to get four days a week.
Yeah, we can have that, like there's a certain amount that they have to receive in the program for fluency. So like, you could talk about like specific schedules of how they pull them out. I don't have that level of detail for each school, but it's not like you have to have, they have to get the right amount of programming weekly. And so two times a week isn't enough for the amount of support they would need. But it's individualized, we would have to talk about what they're seeing very specifically with, with the case loads. And so I'd be happy to follow back up with you on that. Daily, daily intervention within, within Take Flight, daily, for every student that's been identified as needing that level of support.
I'm just trying to paint the picture of how, that what Orton brings is at a much deeper level than what we... What we're offering is excellent, and I'm so grateful you started it off, started off this work session with this presentation, because it is helpful to have the picture of what we're already doing. But just that we are serving kids well, but that then Orton takes it to just a whole other level.
Yeah, I think like the way, so that last slide, the second bullet, school within a school model, I don't know if that's the exact right language, but with all-day support. They talked about at one of their presentations, or maybe it was when I visited. But like, you know, again, a student doesn't stop being dyslexic throughout their school day. So they're not only dyslexic when they get that tier-three intervention in their meeting and going through the intervention programming with the therapist. So it is important that all of the educators, all of the, all of the staff have an understanding of how you scaffold, adjust instruction throughout the school day. And so like, that's the level we aspire to. We aspire to train our teachers so that they really understand how you plan for learning for all, all of your students, particularly in this case scenario, are dyslexic students. You could fill in the same for our second language learners, right? We want them to have that, a student doesn't stop being a second language learner, you know, just we pull them out for ELD, right? Like we, English Language Development. They don't stop being a second language learner throughout the school day. So it's important that they have an understanding of language development and the strategy used to support second language learners. So that's what I believe right now, they have trained, that they've worked with their staff, their entire staff gets training in that way. I don't know the qualifications of each of them, but I'm assuming that they have a certain level of hours, maybe even some similar to, you know, the programming that our 34 staff members have, have been part of. But that's what they currently have that we're aspiring to across the system.
And I just, for my fellow board members, want to just make, make you aware that it's not that we have dedicated FTE that are in our schools supporting these needs, it's that they're wearing multiple hats. Like my daughter's fourth grade teacher leaves her fourth grade classroom to go work with the fifth grade students a couple of days a week in intervention time. And then the other fourth grade teacher takes on the other couple of days a week. So that is what we are currently doing. We don't have like a dedicated dyslexia interventionist at each school. I would love it if they could get there, but...
But do we have that at your clinic site?
Yeah, we do, at...
Did you go back to the previous...
I'm sorry, I got it on this one. Yes. Yeah, so... Yes.
Are they living between schools, or is it only at Monroe?
No, it's, no, they've got, they've got staff, identified staff that have received that particular training at each of the schools that are listed there. The first four there are clinic sites because they have therapists on site.
But the therapist might also be doing other things in their day?
No, they're, they're...
Just only working with dyslexia?
Right, for identified students.
And I think that money is coming from the REDAC funds?
Yes, right now, so yes. Yeah, it's also, it's funding the training programs that we're putting the staff for. So, um... The 34-plus staff, where they're at year one, year two, it's also funding that with that level of training and support.
Can we have this presentation loaded on full docs, because I don't see that at this time, so that...
Sure, we'll send it to Katrina right now, and she can load it. The slide on the UDA supports.
The, what you talk about there, four D11 staff, complete D11 staff in year two, and you break down. So for these staff to get certified, are we providing the funding?
Yes, through us, sir.
Okay, so that's why you say like additional cohort, they're funding available?
Yeah, we want to work out and work through the details, right, of how we're putting together plans. So I, we, I mentioned expansion connected to the academic master plan. And we got a CRO that's re-looking at how are we, how are we redoing our budget development process so that we really can align our strategy with our dollars? And so that makes it a little easier, because we're gonna have to make some decisions.
Okay, so moving on from this, I'd be good to move on from this. Thank you for that presentation, to provide some clarity as to what the district is offering. We'll turn it back to you now. Do you want to start off by presenting a quick summary of some of the questions that were asked? I know that you sent that email, that answer said, maybe you can make a quick, short, five-minute, 10-minute, whatever it is, and then I can turn it over to the board for additional?
Sure, so what we tried to do is kind of put together all of the board's questions from last week, as well as the VAC questions, and we sort of grouped them into categories. So we're all here representing sort of different aspects of your questions, so we may each in turn take some time to answer your questions. It seemed like the first question that was important to the board was understanding our turnaround status. So what we've done is, is provide some information about local data that we use to track our students' reading progress. And we've provided links to all that data, so you can see how exactly we're tracking our own students. Cindy, would you want to talk a little bit more about like how we, how we measure the turnaround status? And like what we're doing and some, some of the ways we're approaching it?
So this, this was actually the first year that we received a grade on our SPF, because we typically have lower participation, because, you know, we know that the CMAS is not a great measure for our population, and it actually is quite traumatic for some of them at times. So, you know, it was kind of a learning experience to see kind of how, finally when we got a score, where they all kind of fell. And I think the thing that we realized is that we've been putting equal emphasis on achievement and growth. And I think we realized that, you know, our students, because of their dyslexia, will always be struggling to reach that achievement, but we can get the growth. And so this year, we're focusing more on that growth and really working on students where they are and moving them forward. And we have to do that with local measures. The state test, the floor is too high for our students to access the state testing. But on local tests such as DIBELS, we can see that movement. So when we have a child who reads five words a minute at the beginning of the year in second grade, we can measure that growth over the year to make sure they are progressing. They may grow incredibly for themselves, but still be red. You know, they might go from a dim-dead red to an orangey-red. And that's incredible growth, but it's not enough to really show up on some of the bigger tests, because the jumps are too big for them. So we really focus on that local data, we do it for reading, writing, and math. We measure the percentage of benchmark, and we track that percentage of benchmark as the benchmark moves, so that we can see that they are closing that gap over time. And so our big focus, I think you've all seen the UIP, that's the beginning of it. We have taken the information in our action steps in the UIP. We've broken it down into an action plan that breaks it into smaller steps. And then we have other documents that are related to the different steps that we're breaking down to those bite-sized pieces. So we can say, okay, we need to do A, B, C in order to accomplish D. And so we're just continually defining our analysis of where we are and what we need to do. And so I think, you know, that growth, when I looked at the growth and I saw that our middle school English was one point away from being in the next category. It's like, okay, we can do that, that, we can certainly do that. And so I think that's where our push is going to be as a net growth, because that's where our kids can show.
Just one technical aspect to the school performance framework too. From Orton's perspective, this is the first year I've stated that the SPF was issued with an actual plan type. And I think what's significant about that is that because of the way that, you know, the state assessment works and the way that that is allocated within the school performance framework, our students at Orton Academy, there has been low participation, but there's been insufficient data as well, which if you understand the measures and the metrics that go into that, insufficient data is really tied to specific student growth. We've got a lot of new students coming in over the years. And of course, started the school at a time that quickly thereafter entered into a pandemic and had some transitioning, obviously, in and out of building and things like that. These are not excuses, these are realities that the school has faced over the years. The school has grown in population, although not fast, not quickly. And the insufficient data piece that has been identified within the school performance framework in the past years now resulted this past fall in an actual accreditation plan-type turnaround. This was un, not expected actually at the school level, because it's, you know, it's not happening for. It's not happened with the school data in the past. So I think that has actually been a good indicator for the administrative team as well, supporting staff and things to understand what needs to be accomplished with the students, in particular around the state assessment, because they are required to take the state assessment. The school is not asking parents to opt out of the assessment, although some parents make that choice on their own. Those students that do participate are showing some growth, and in particular in areas that are measured internally, as Cindy's talking about as well. So I think the result of the SPF plan type this year was a little, timing was not good. Let's be honest, we're in the middle of an application for a charter with the district. And, but I think that on behalf of the administration and the board in particular, that we should understand that there is all hands on deck in terms of wanting to make sure that you're aware and that we are working with families to understand what the accountability measures are in the state of Colorado, and that we are accountable for those things, we want to address it.
Are there any other questions that you need to address from your side?
Yes, so, well, there were several questions, so we'll just take them maybe one by one. There were, there were some questions regarding enrollment, which may have been more from the DAC side. I don't know if that's of interest to the board. You had asked, they had asked about the enrollment process, which I think we fully outlined in the document. I don't know if there's any more concerns. We do provide a weighted lottery for students, so we provide free screening. We don't turn away any students from Orton. Our goal is to maintain at least a 75% enrollment rate with students of dyslexia that we have a weighted lottery at this time. And let's see, we have 75% of enrollment. 75%, we aim to have 75% of our enrollment as students with dyslexia.
Out of the capacity of what?
Of our entire student body.
And how large do you...
We have 115 students. Yeah, and let's see.
And I think just to emphasize something that you identified on the slide there. We don't require a dyslexia diagnosis. We take, we want stu, we want to help kids read. It doesn't matter if they have a piece of paper that says that, and that kind of speaks to what you were saying about children of color maybe not getting the access. And a lot of that could be because, you know, the lower, yes, it's very expensive to get a diagnosis. But we don't need that. We want kids to struggle to read, whether it's dysptia or dyslexia. And that's what our focus is, because it's just good reading instruction. And we don't want to prevent a child who needs that, because they don't have that piece of paper that costs $1,500 to get.
And to your question, Director Daniels, I hope I correctly summarized your, the question you posed to us last week, but I think it pertained to the need of minority students with dyslexia, and how can we promote more outreach to marginalized communities? and how can we promote more outreach to marginalized communities. And, um, Orton is serving currently a very pretty diverse population. It's more diverse than our, um, D 11 homeschool. So right now, um, 56% of our students are students of color. That represents actually an increase from 42% from last year. I have the breakdown here of students by demographic and also the amount, the number who are in the I U Ps, who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And we understand, um, I think, um, similarly to the way you were thinking, that students of color are historically under identified. And as Cindy says, we're really working hard to promote our model of teaching therapy at no cost to families. So, um, it's my personal mission and the mission of the board to expand our capacity to serve as many students as we possibly can. Again, we don't, we don't need to have students who are already identified. We can identify them and bring them on board if they're struggling with reading. So, um, so I hope that adequately addressed your question.
And I just wanted to, um, speak a little bit to, I don't know, that was directly into a response to a question. But about the training, um, that we do train our, our therapists as well, that come in. In fact, I trained a few of the, the 11 therapists that you have. Some wonderful ladies.
No.
No, no, I actually trained, trained them as the 11 teachers, yes. But that it's, there's so much work to be done around this. And, you know, I'm, I'm currently part of I D A, um, Rocky Mountain Branch, the Alpha Group, which is the certifying body for, um, the therapists, and C D E's Dyslexia Working Group. And, you know, being a part of all that, I, I can see that the 11 is ahead of a lot of schools, a lot of districts. Yes, for sure. You know, it's just exciting to think that, you know, if we could add to that. I mean, this could be the district that changes education for students. And, you know, I, I think we have a lot that we can bring, we can offer training. I firmly believe that every teacher taught reading the way Calts teach reading, you wouldn't need a dyslexia program and you wouldn't need a school for students with dyslexia. And that's my goal to get there. But just, I would love that, that ability to, to work complimentary with a district, to move our school and the district towards that and become that leader in the state.
I wanted to follow up on that, though it's not quite your questions. I wanted to congratulate you all on what you are doing here in the district, because I work with districts all over the place, and, and you are without a doubt the most progressive district in the state on dealing with dyslexia. You should be celebrated for that. And my, my wife is a Q I and teaches Calts all over the state. No other district does this. We might have one Calt in school in the district, and we're praising God that we have one Calt in one school. The only other district that's anywhere close to you is St. Crane. And my wife is doing a training program to roll out what you all are doing here. And she has 13 teachers right now, and this, they're just rolling it out. So you are more than doubling, almost tripling what St. Crane is doing. Congratulate you all. You are setting the standards for the state and hopefully for the country as well.
Appreciate the feedback, that's the intent on our side. Anything further from you?
Well, there was a question from the D A C with regard to para. We don't currently offer para to our employees. As a contract school, we're not obligated to offer para. And nor do the majority of our employees wish to be enrolled in para.
But that may change if you are dealing with a charter. You may not have a choice. But I don't know what the state does, from the state perspective, you'd be required to enroll in para?
No.
No.
The charter schools are allowed to, um, contract with an outside organization that is the employer for the, uh, staff. And that is what MINGA does for our schools, they are the employer for all of our staffs, for all of our staff. How our school is not, MINGA is. And so we would probably continue that arrangement, because our Calts are in unique, um, teachers. They, they, most likely do not fit the category that would want to have para. And so.
To get them to come into our unique school, we need to be able to have the flexibility to offer them something different than para. Danny can talk to that.
Too much charge, didn't have, um, you can ask for waivers. This is the only one that we're trying to make mandatory. D 11, but then there are waivers for para.
But then you participate in social security?
Correct. We did review, uh, Mr. Johnson's financial review of charter application as well, and we agree with him 100% on his findings that district employees are required to contribute to para as opposed to district, as well as charter boards. Orton Academy would be seeking a traditional charter contract with District 11 that does specify that any members of the board's employment agreement would be para contributing members. But at this point, the, the board has made the decision to contract out from employment services, therefore has no employees. And of course, as a charter school, there would not be even district employees working at the, at the school. So, uh, Mr. Rome is correct, there are opportunities, different settings. MINGA Education Group services some of those opportunities. Would look to continue to provide services to Orton Academy under that construct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Martha Rod had a question regarding our, our policies, about which ones we keep and which one we waive. I can't hear about. Policy waving? So our policies align with Casby, and I'm going to defer to Andy to perhaps provide some more details since he's closer to our policies. But we recognize that if, if there's anything that is misaligned with the 11, as if we were, um, if we were to move into your district, we would throw out those policies. And so we adopt all the policies that are non-wavable. Any other clarification that you want to add?
I think you had some questions at the previous meeting about, um, the application stating that we request waivers that maybe District 11 doesn't even have adopted. And those are standard policies that Casby would produce. And of course, if they're not applicable, they're not applicable. But, um, the district has a great set of waivers and typical, in typical charter fashion, the board would develop either their own waivers for policies that they can waive out of, or they would revert back to the district. Either non-wavable or, um, the district, or the, I'm sorry, the charter board's valid, as though the district waiver was applicable in their school setting.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, if they had done their presentation, then I can open it up to the board.
Yes. So I'll just address that in particular. Go on to those things. Yes, I, I just, I appreciate that you looked to Casby for direction. But we certainly have, we have so many policies, and we're working on that as, as a district. So just maybe with Scott or our people, you might want to still check and see if there's anything out there that they think, aside from Casby's.
I think in the contracting phase, if the board were to approve the charter application in the contracting phase, we'd be happy to discuss.
That's where it borne itself out in previous conversations.
Ada?
Well, I have a couple of things. One is, um, I appreciated your bringing up the para and, and social security question and understanding that this may be something that, um, is something that can be waived. I'd still appreciate if in that contracting phase, we can have that assurance from legal that they're okay to go, just the social security route through MINGA. Because, you know, we don't want to get in trouble anymore than you do.
Absolutely.
All right. Yeah, do you want to give anybody else a chance, or should I keep going?
Finish the photo series.
All right, I appreciated the, the general, um, email today. I didn't have a chance to look at that, and there were a couple there that weren't as important to me that were still DAC. One was parent and community engagement. I assume you're going to encourage parental engagement and, okay. All right, sounds good. The other thing that from Glenn's report, he said there might be some difficulties in compatibility and also with, um, searchability. So I wondered about that if, but again, that might be something that comes out in the contracting phase, where we can figure out how you all can provide the information to the district.
So MINGA Education Group provides the, um, back office financial support to the school as well. And, and I think what he was alluding to in his report, if I understood it correctly, is that he was concerned about the accounting software that's used currently in the compatibility with the district software. The accountability, um, piece, I don't project to be a problem. We do, uh, provide services with other schools that use the chart of accounts that are required through the department. And, uh, I think that, um, we would be open to adjustments as far as the accountability software, if that was a requirement, of course, but I, I don't know that that would be an issue on our end. Making sure that the, in particular, what needs to happen is that the reconciliation at the end of the year, in particular for the audit that you just went through. Orton Academy would certainly have to be a part of that and provide the appropriate accounting for that. We, we've had no issues with other, um, school sites or currently with Orton Academy that does produce an annual, uh, independent financial audit every year to ensure that it's meeting the correct, correct requirements for the state.
So you think that the reclassification, um, he, he had a recommendation to reclassify expenditures for, for C D E's uniform chart of accounts?
Yeah, I mean, the, the current, um, accounting structure is in the chart of accounts. So I would have to ask him a few more questions about what he's seeing and, and understand that a little bit better. But, um, like I said, you know, the school just produced a, a financial audit that was compliant with state requirements. And so I feel like we can continue to do that for you.
And last but not least, I think for me was the, um, the financial transparency. He mentioned that some additional years needed to be posted. I think only one audit year was posted, and you've been around a couple of years at least. So you might have more than one audit.
Just, we just accepted one yesterday.
That's going up as we speak.
Okay, and, and any past years sounded like?
We just redid our website, so I think there's a few missing links in there, honestly, so we have.
We know that.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for noting that, and we'll be sure to, we have conducted an audit every year. So we'll be sure to post that for financial transparency.
Sounds good, thanks, I think that was it for me.
Okay, any other board members' questions?
I just would like to learn a little more about your training process. I know I spoke with my daughter's teacher, and she went through C C, and it was like three and a half weeks during the summer, super intense, she said. She said several of the teachers that started with her couldn't last through it. So, um, I am very intrigued at when I read in here that you would be willing to help train more people and what that might look like, and that it be more sustainable or like well, like balance?
Exactly the same as through C C, but without the expensive credit hours. I mean, you know, there's like two types of cohorts. There's cohorts that want to get the master's degree, and so they go through a college, you know, like C C to get that. But then there's others that just go through the literacy training program. It's the same requirements, hours, you know, it's still the 200 plus hours in the classroom, 700 hours of practicum, you know. But they're, they're not getting the C C credit for it, so.
So is it like they then can claim they have a certification or?
They, they do the same thing as the ones going through C C would do. So you, you would do your first year, um, and that's the intense one, the fire hose to the face of those intense three, first three weeks. And then you have the, um, classes throughout the year, and then you sit for your first exam when you have enough hours. And then you become a certified academic language practitioner. Then you go through your second year, and there's one week in the summer. And then you go through all year, going, you know, to class on Saturdays. And then you sit for your certified academic language therapist exam. So it's the, it's exactly the same to, to become a therapist, there's, there's very strict requirements from the credentialing board. And so if, anybody who's training somebody would be following all of those credentials or all those requirements.
And then you become a Navy SEAL or a SEAL.
Yes, you do, yep, yep, that's the, the bonus.
And those of the, in, in the certificate program, um, they get CEUs so they can use that for recertification?
Um, I don't know, I suppose. CEUs?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I'm not sure. We'd have to look, because I know schools have some leeway at some of the things that they do.
I, I, I would think that you would. I mean, I, we've run, uh, my literacy group has run literacy, or, um, mini-conferences, and we apply and they get it.
Yeah, and to be a, to be a CalT or a CalP, you do have to have, um, CEUs every year. You have to have 10 CEUs yearly.
Oh, for Orton Gillingham?
For the CalT.
For the what?
For all CalT.
For, the CalT is the, so Orton Gillingham is, um, kind of a philosophy or a methodology. And we're talking about a specific credentialing program that is based on the Orton Gillingham model, but it's more intense. It is truly a therapy level, um, program that you're doing in degree.
The training they're talking about, and that, you know, connected to the, oh, the training that you're, that they're talking about? The training, it sounds like you are identifying for the 34 individuals we talked about in D 11. It is going to be intense, because, because this is, it's not, it's certified academic language training.
Yeah.
And so like that's a different level of certification, um, than like other training. And so like that's what I would say in D 11 and across the state, which this is very helpful in terms of our work to support, supporting all dyslexic students. But, uh, in, um, the science of reading, right? So like all of our, um, teachers in D 11 and all of teachers in the state had to go through either C D E modules in foundational literacy and the science of reading, or, um, letter, the majority of our teachers went through letters. But there's ongoing work that has to happen in terms of throughout the school. So not all of our teachers would be trained in, um, as certified academic language therapists or, um, practitioners. But they would all have a level of training of, um, now you've had that science of reading training, what does that mean for how you actually apply it with our literacy materials, um, throughout the day? And that's the thing, like, and so you've been taking some of those same practices, but you make the connection, right, with, um, with, with that training that, 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 that we've required of them.
Well, I get it now, call, certified academic.
Yep, got it.
What are they talking about?
Sorry.
I'm a little.
Appunims, education.
I didn't take that training or learn how to read properly when I was.
Nelson, I use.
Uh, I finished, yeah.
Okay, any other, uh, go ahead.
So, um, alternative education campus versus turnaround school? What, what in this whole airplay of you, it's your existence as a school versus charter school, where would that come into play, maybe?
So we cannot be identified as an alternative school, um, because there's no certification for elementary status, um, right now. So, um, or, or middle school. So, um, so that's not an option for us.
That's something we have to take the legislature, because they should be.
Thank you.
Jason, did you have any questions before I? Good. You mentioned about the, is it priority improvement status that you are on?
Turnaround.
Turnaround status, okay. And then your school performance framework, there was a comment that you have put together a good, robust school improvement, um, plan. And then you talked about now how you need to focus on growth going forth as opposed to achievement for your target demographic. Considering all that in place, where do you expect a year from now your school to be at after you go through, uh, the next round of state testing?
Um, I expect us to be a, a category higher. I really think that, you know, like I said, this was our first score we've gotten, so we, we.
so we, we really had no kind of idea where we were. And now we know where we are and so now we can see where we need to work and where we need to put our focus. We're also past that highly operational phase where, you know, the first three years we're just trying to get the school running and stabilized and all that. And now we're to the point where we have an administrative team, so we can split those administrative duties and now we can really focus on instructional practices. So, yes, I, I would love to be able to move up at least one category. I think that would be, I think we can do it, I really do. I really think we can do it. It's, you know, the, the turnaround, and this is going to sound really odd, but it's almost like a blessing, I think, because it's, it's giving us some opportunities and it's giving us some clarity, so we know where we are finally. And, and once you know where you are, it's easier to make that move. But when we were just kind of floating in nothingness, it was hard to say, you know, well, what, I wonder what our growth is, is it good, is it bad, you know? So, now we know. Now we know where we are, we know what we earned, now it's time to make it better.
Thank you, thank you for the feedback. I fully understand the challenges that you guys are facing, the demographic of students that you are reaching and all that you are presenting to the board and what you are sharing out there. I appreciate all that you guys are doing to address the challenges that our dyslexic students are facing. But what we as a district are focused on going forth is that excellence in education that we do strive to be better than what we were the previous year. So, the hope is that now that you know where you are and what, what is in front of you, that you can address some of those gaps with the robust school improvement plan. And then in the next year or so, and we do get to talk to you in future years, that you are progressing upwards.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
The location that you are in, this might have been covered in your report, but if you can just briefly talk about, are you looking for other locations? Are you okay with the location that you are at right now? Are there any expectations that you are looking at the district for support as far as location goes?
So, a couple different things on location. One, our, we're very centrally located, which is nice. But our building, we do have room for some growth, but it is, it's old. There's a lot of technology limitations sometimes with trying to get, you know, internet throughout the whole building. We make it work. There are four more classrooms in the basement that we can rent. But it, it is quite expensive. You know, last year we, our kids did a fundraiser to rent the gym. We paid three hundred dollars a day for the gym.
Just so the kids could be inside on a cold estate.
So, the kids could have PE inside.
Yeah.
You know, so things like that, now it's part of our, our lease agreement, but it still, you know, adds up, because every little square foot we get costs us a little bit more. So, we can expand a little bit where we are. But we, you know, if we're going to expand more, you know, too much more, then we're going to need to look for a, a little bit larger space.
And are you looking for something like that at this point?
We haven't yet, because right now we could, you know, do another fifty students probably with...
We still are, we have, within the confines of our lease throughout the rest of this school year. And so, we're really awaiting the outcome of the, the district's decision to look ahead to our next year. But our building is, is adequate, but not ideal under any, under any measure. It's very old. It's not a building that I think we're super proud to be in. But we make it work and the kids are what's important and the teachers are what's important. So, so it's what works for us right now, but it's probably not where we'd like to be in the future.
It's not our forever home.
Well, thank you, thank you for providing that information too. Parents are still choosing your school because of the quality of the product that you put, not for the external structure that is out there. But if the learning environment is comfortable and also modern, where it can provide you the techno, technology benefits and things like those, then that's cherry on the top of what I would...
That would, yeah, that would. If I didn't have to deal with technology issues every day, that would be fabulous. Yeah, that would be definitely the cherry on top.
Well, that's something for the district to also consider and see if we have any available space going forward is available for you, but that's a future conversation of that. Seeing no further questions, thank you again for coming and making that presentation and answering some of the questions. This will come in two weeks as an action item in front of the board. If between now and twenty-ninth, if you have any additional questions, please do forward it to Superintendent Call. Copy Dr. Mendelsberg, because he is the conduit to, to...
Be happy to answer any of the questions.
Yeah, and then copy the rest of the board too, so for their awareness that you are asking those questions, so. And then if not, two weeks from now, we will, this will come as an actual item at that point in time and the board will make a decision.
Sadist, no point of clarification, sir. I think we walked in on some conversation about your board having new members being seated. This action will take place...
This, this will date with the current board in place, because it's the current board.
You won't start again.
Yeah. Because it's the current board that has... It's the current board that has been involved in this work session discussion. So, hypothetically, if the new board gets seated on the twenty-ninth, it's still the old board that will make the decision on this one and then at the end of the meeting, the new board will get it.
Thank you, sir.
No, we are not going to go through that.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And that's gracious for you all. Any other subject material that can, for all of you and for the community, happy Thanksgiving. So, I hope you guys have a good Thanksgiving break and we will see you after Thanksgiving. We are officially adjourned at seven twenty-seven P M.